I can call the meeting order tonight. We're going to have a moment of silence. I'm going to call tonight's meeting order and we're going to have a moment of silence and a pledge and then we'll have all.
Point allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ralston?
Here.
Mr. Rich?
Here.
Mr. Sladey?
Here.
Mr. Crayle?
Here.
Mr. Rolet?
Here.
Okay, the purpose of tonight's meeting is a special meeting for the city council to get information on the background on the, some litigation with Medallion Home. And Mr. Shepherd, would you please take over from here?
Yes, sir. First of all, based on the discussions that were had at the last meeting on this subject, it is my understanding, obviously you guys can change your mind on that, that this is going to be a session for your benefit, no decisions to be made, therefore no public comment. That's, that's what I recall, so I'm just repeating what I remember and that as long as no decisions are made, that's, that's fine, that is within your purview to do. Tonight, we're going to get a background on the status of, of one of two cases. And I'm telling that so you don't think that this is the only case. There's two cases involving Medallion. One has kind of been stayed and put on hold, pending the outcome of this one. But we're not going to be hearing that, there's really nothing to report except that it's still on holding pattern. The case that we're going to hearing, be hearing about tonight is called the DEC action or the declaratory relief action, one in which Medallion Homes has petitioned the court to answer, in layman's terms, a legal question. Essentially, the, the question has been put before the court that says, "We think we have these rights, the city thinks they have those rights, and we want the judge to tell us who's right." So that's, that's what a declaratory action is. It's where you go to ask the court to solve not an outcome of who's right or wrong, but to answer a question about what the law says about a particular issue. It can certainly lead to other things, and that's what you're going to find out about as we get further down the road here, but the first step is, on the law, who's right or wrong on a particular point. In fact, one of the things that the petitioner, in this case Medallion, has to allege is that there is a, excuse me, is a good faith dispute or there is serious doubt about the rights of the parties. So that's what a DEC action is. The case began based on a development that was put in place in 2004, the prior developer called Pringle Homes. And Pringle built a number of homes before the economy went bad in 2008. I understand that they were, became insolvent. Ultimately, the property was sold in foreclosure and bought out of foreclosure by the current developer, Medallion Homes. There have been attempts, many of which I can't talk about because they came through mediation, to resolve the dispute. They have not proved successful thus far. And there is certainly the history of, of what happened in this body publicly that people who are know the history will recall, but I want to cover a little bit of that because it's not going to be covered in the talk with Ms. Sutphen, who is our defense counsel, is going to present. In brief, this case involves a couple of parcels. Those parcels were dedicated, or to be dedicated to the city for a well site and a fire station site within the, what is now known as the Lakes of Mount Dora community. Those were two of the things that were negotiated by the city for the benefit of the city and return for which the developer got substantial benefits you'll hear about. As the economy has bounced back and Medallion has been successful, it has requested to the city that it get those sites back to use for development purposes on its own. There were discussions over a period of time to try to come to some resolution because those sites have value to the city, as to how that would go about and for reasons that involve as much practicalities as they do politics, those discussions did not prove fruitful in the end. And that is how, in a very short summary, we ended up in litigation. There's, there's much more to it that I'd feel more comfortable discussing with you one-on-one or as appropriate, and that's critical, in a shade meeting. We may or may not have one of those, that's, that'll be discussed a little bit later tonight perhaps, but the point is, it's where it involves strategy and sensitive history, it's not probably appropriate for us to do that here tonight, and so we will not. Ms. Sutphen is a very fine lawyer and she works with Bell &amp; Roper, they are assigned defense counsel through our insurance company. She's been defending this from day one and she has procedural history of where we are now, and she can also kind of lay out the, the background to the case that will explain even more how we got to where we are. So Sherri Sutphen, take it over.
Good evening. Cliff didn't steal all of my thunder, but most of it, so bear with me. Some of you look very familiar to me, some of you are new, so if I'm repeating things that you have heard in previous meetings that we've had, please bear with me. I'm going to get through those historical facts. My facts, interestingly, are based on documents. What I've been able to gather from both the plaintiff, Medallion Home, and from the city records, that's the information that I'm going to deliver to you tonight. My perspective is not a historic perspective because I've been here for a long time and lived it, because I haven't. So I'm giving you the facts based on what the documents show, and then from there, we can discuss where we are in the litigation. I pushed the right button, I think, Mark. There you go. The property ownership, and we're dealing with the property that is currently the PUD-zoned development, Lakes of Mount Dora. Historically, the Griffin family owned the property, and they sold the property in 2004 to PRM Properties. Prior to the actual sale of the property, there was a development agreement, because at the time, development was really dictated in the state of Florida by the Department of Community Affairs, and what the department really wanted was kind of all over the place, and development rights were unsure, and so this agreement was entered into in 2002 between actually the property owner, the Griffins, PRM Properties, or Pringle Properties, and the city. And it did several things. It dealt with both the development rights and the development necessities. So what the agreement did was make sure that the city would get what it needed to service the property and that the property would get what it desired in order to be a development within the city of Mount Dora. After the property was purchased and the development was going to start, ordinance 857 was actually adopted by the city. This ordinance is actually mentioned in the Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions for the Lakes of Mount Dora, and it states in the declaration for the covenants, of covenants and restrictions, that it's an ordinance that the developer entered into, because the developer was entering into this ordinance, just like they were in agreement, to allow for certain special zoning, that they could secure those benefits for the development, and at the same time, they were in exchange providing a well site and a fire site to the city. And I'll go through each one of these separately. The 2002 agreement and the 2004 ordinance did several things, but they did identical things. One of the specific things that they did with respect to the residential development was they made reductions in the minimum lot size. In making reductions in minimum lot size, you increase your density. So it means you can put more houses on a piece of property when your minimum lot size is smaller. Your straight residential zoning in your current land development code has larger lot sizes than what were currently provided, or what were provided to the Lakes of Mount Dora. In addition, there are the benefit of reduction and setbacks. Commercial uses are allowed mixed in with these residential uses, where currently, your land development code, if you have residential houses, typically you don't have, you know, major commercial uses that are mixed in with those residential uses. This PUD zoning allowed for the mix. A clubhouse was permitted. Again, that's something that typically is not allowed within a residential setting. And recreational uses were allowed without a conditional use requirement. Traditionally, if you have, if you want to do something on your property that's not permitted by your code as a permitted use, excuse me, there are conditional uses, but you have to go through a city process to get approval, public input, all of those sorts of things in order to get that conditional use approval on your property. The conditional use approvals are just allowed on these properties. An RV boat and storage area was allowed. You most definitely wouldn't have such a storage area mixed in with residential uses, but it's, it's certainly just allowed. Thank you. And the final item are the docks without setback requirements. Now let's look at the well site. I cannot take credit for this drawing. This is your very own John Peters. Actually, he is the one who explained it to me in terms that I could understand it from a water perspective, and so I thought it was very helpful, so I thought that I could bring it to you all. If you all will look at the, the big blue box and think of it as the city of Mount Dora. The three smaller boxes that are shaded in inside the city of Mount Dora represent your current water resources. The Lakes of Mount Dora is located all the way in the top right-hand corner of the city of Mount Dora, well, of my box, but it is in the corner of the city. And because of this current structure of water resources, I think the water pressure, their experience in the Lakes of Mount Dora, they experience some water pressure problems currently, and we aren't even to full capacity or full, full buildout in the Lakes of Mount Dora. But the well site was originally designed to assist with water pressure for the citizens that live there, and once it had reached full capacity, the 950 homes within the Lakes of Mount Dora, in addition to the commercial uses, that the well site would indeed be needed to assist with that pressure. And it's, it's highly unlikely that the developer would have ever achieved the increased densities that they received, that we discussed earlier, where I indicated to you that the minimum lot size had been decreased. It is highly unlikely that they would have received such densities without this future water source so that the entire system could be looped to help with the pressure. The fire site. Development, this, this particular development was originally marketed as being, having a fire station within its gates to assist with quicker response times for medical purposes to assist the needs of the elderly residents. Again, just like with the water site, once the Lakes of Mount Dora is fully built to capacity, there would be a need for a fire station in this area just to accommodate public safety needs in general, aside from response times for medical purposes, for fire safety and other, other things that a fire station addresses. And again, the densities would likely not have been achieved because there is not a fire station in the area that would fully serve all once the Lakes of Mount Dora is built to capacity. Okay. Mr. Pringle tried and it didn't work out for him. He was unable to continue to develop the property, and unfortunately, in 2010, that the property was fully foreclosed on and there was a certificate of title issue. I know there's some question about, there was some bankruptcy and foreclosure, but ultimately, there was a foreclosure sale. There was a certificate of title. The bank purchased the property under an LLC. It's actually BB&amp;T, that is the bank, for $500,001, $500,100. The bank sat on the property for almost a year, and in 2011, the property was purchased, by Medallion Homes, for a little over $2.3 million. Now you will see an asterisk next to the $2.3 million. We have been able to uncover certain information related to the purchase that is directly related to legal strategy, so it is certainly something that I can discuss with you in an executive session, or that I could discuss with you in private meetings, but I think in this forum, it's, it's, I'm protecting the city's interest to not discuss that with you at this time. So fast forward, we're in development now. Prior to the foreclosure action, 357 building permits of the 950 were actually pulled and developed. Medallion takes over, 74 of the building permits have been issued, so for a total of, I believe, 431, leaving us with 519 lots that remain undeveloped. And then, over 50% of the lots that are developable are currently without service needs. And this is important because you haven't reached necessarily a time yet when the fire site or the well site are necessary to the city, because you still are just, at, at less than 50% of the lots have been fully built. At some point in 2014, Medallion approached the city and asked to increase the number of developable lots. In doing that, they were going to need to use the fire and well sites in order to get those additional lots. They would achieve 54 additional buildable lots. Discussions were had, and it was ultimately determined that the city would obtain appraisals and Medallion would obtain appraisals, and then they would pay the difference to the city. The, the middle ground was $262,500. The city staff supported the proposal. They were completely on board with it. When it made its way to commission, it died and did not go any further. And that is how the litigation came about, that we're currently involved in. As Cliff told you, we are dealing with a one-count complaint related to declaratory relief. Basically, they're, they're claiming that the dedications of the well and fire sites are unconstitutional requirements. They're seeking to have the court decide the validity of the well and fire sites, and they're seeking the costs associated with their attempts to develop these sites. We've actively been involved in written discovery, and what that entails is us asking them questions, them asking us questions, and those questions being answered under oath, us gathering information as far as documents, them gathering documentation, and they have taken actually sworn testimony from four of your city employees related to this particular development, from historical to current perspectives. And I think all of your, your employees did a fantastic job in representing the city. We've, after I had discussions with each one of the commissioners, I sat down with each one of you, I know that some of you will recall those discussions, and gave you some of this history, because some of it I didn't know at the time. I have since been able to collect a lot of documents and gone through them and been able to put together a lot of this information. And at that time, it was, we wanted to move forward with possibly discussing settlement again with them, under the same terms that we had previously discussed with them, and I have not gotten a response back from their attorney as to whether that's something that they're interested in doing. And so basically, that is where we are, and that is where we are with the litigation. I can certainly answer any questions that you have, but in your defense and in protection of the city, I certainly can't discuss my legal strategy with you all in this open forum. Would be happy to do it in an executive session if we're going to strategize on how to try to settle this suit, or in private meetings with each of you.
Can you go back, just one, maybe two slides?
Yes, because Mark told me how to do that. You tell me when to stop.
One more back, one more. Okay, that one.
Okay.
So, so let me just make sure I've got this correct. So, in 2014, some month, we don't know when, Medallion comes to the city and says, "We want more buildable lots. We want to use the fire and well sites for, for buildings." Is that correct? And by the way, stop me if I start to make something that's illegal.
You're right, and we don't have it in the PowerPoint, but the date could be determined because they filed an application. I just don't know what the date was.
Okay. So, so from those two sites, they would get 54 additional home sites?
As they had them laid out at that time, yes, that was the number they were seeking.
Okay, and then, did, did you, Ms. Sutphen, say that, that there was an agreed-upon price for this?
I did. Actually, the city supported, the city staff supported, the $262,500. An agenda item was brought before the city council and the settlement was rejected at council level.
Okay.
There, there's more to that discussion because it wasn't rejected because of money. There were two aspects to the proposal that needed to be approved. One was a comprehensive plan amendment, and one was a rezoning. The comprehensive plan amendment was to allow the additional density and to reduce the amount of open space that your comprehensive plan requires. For those who don't know, and I assume that's most of you that are new, comprehensive plan is considered the constitution of land use for the state, for your body. And so if you don't allow greater density, which that code, that plan did not allow, or less open space, which that comp plan didn't allow, then you don't even get to talk about rezoning to add the additional capacity. Since they voted down the comp plan, they necessarily had to vote down the rezoning. So the money was not the holdup, it was the other issues, at least in terms of how it played out in the public arena.
So, so that would have meant that the comp plan from then forward would have been allowable? More density for anybody, any development? Is that correct?
For the, for the amount of property that it covered, because I, I'm not positive whether it was qualified as a small scale or large scale, I don't know if Mark remembers. If it was a small scale, then it just applied to under 10 acres and it was just that property, but I do not remember. Was, do you remember, sir?
The comp plan amendment, there's a, there's a section in our land use code that directly relates to the Pringle property because, as, as Ms. Sutphen mentioned, the Department of Community Affairs required us to add policies that were related directly to this for a number of reasons, so they were requesting amendments to those policies that required the open space and limited the density specifically within this project.
But just for this project?
Yes, ma'am.
Wouldn't have been for overall from here forward in the future?
Just for this project.
You mentioned negotiating. You mentioned negotiations had been started to try to settle this after that declination by the, by the city council in 2014. And when was that initiated and how long you had been waiting for an answer?
This was prior to Ms. Sutphen, because she got involved when suit was filed in this year. I don't exactly the month, whether January, February, March, but, but they filed this suit this year. Those negotiations began because there was a procedure, statutory procedure that the developer, once denied, was able to avail themselves of, and it's a unique procedure because it includes both a mediation portion and a special magistrate portion. We only engaged in the mediation portion because by agreement, when the mediation was successful, the developer and the city decided that a special magistrate proceeding, which would end up in simply a recommendation to you, but no binding decision, was, in essence, a waste of time. But the mediation began, I'm gonna say, in November, December of 2014. Again, a calendar could give me the exact date. Went on for a number of months, and in fact, I was prompted by members of council, at almost every council meeting, what was the status, but because mediation is confidential, I couldn't really reveal that except in one-on-one meetings, and again, much like here, not everybody wanted to have those meetings. But, and I still can't discuss what was happening, but, but I will say, as in most every mediation, there was some back and forth, and, and both sides engaged in that process over a significant period of time until the mediator slash, our special magistrate, Carlos Alvarez, declared an impasse. And that happened, and again, I say, I want to say it was in March or April, and shortly thereafter, the suit was filed.
So it's been over a year since?
Yes.
I think for his question, but if you were speaking about after I came to met, to meet with you all and asked each one of you what you thought, when I instituted those negotiations, that was probably in March or April of this year, and then we've been involved in, in discovery, so.
Thank you.
And I'm not sure who I'm asking this question.
It's okay.
Okay. So, right now, we're in the discovery phase where we're trading documents and, and statements and things like that. How long does that last, and how do we know when that's over, and what comes after discovery?
Well, it really, I can't give you a specific timeframe on how long that lasts because we're not in federal court. Federal court makes you have very strict guidelines, but in state court, it's kind of a lot looser, and the more documents that we go through, the more information we find out, which prompts other questions and other requests for information. We currently are waiting on documents from a non-party. So, I, I can't give you a specific timeframe. I can tell you that we have not deposed any of their principles at this point because we just received documents from them right before Thanksgiving. So, we're still reviewing, I mean, huge binders of documents that I received. So, we're still in that process of doing that. But after discovery is when we would, we would both say, "Okay, we're ready for trial." And we would get on a trial calendar and we would get a case management order, and it would tell us, "Okay, we're going to have pre-trial conferences, we have to have mediation by this time, and then you'll ultimately go to trial." Do I anticipate that it's in 2016? Yes, probably mid to late.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
I have a question. The, we had a, you spoke early on about a ordinance, about that there was an ordinance that was set up with Pringle and the city.
Yes, sir.
And a basic ordinance was, was put in effect. If they had a separate ordinance, why was the development, why was the comp plan coming into play at that point if there was a separate ordinance on how that, how that development was going to be built?
Well, I'm going to defer to Mark for that because he is your land development expert, and he can also provide you with the history of what DCA was requiring at the time.
To sort of step back in time a little bit, the now Department of Economic Opportunity, referring to the Department of Community Affairs at the time, has been changed. They had a great deal of authority over land use at the local level based upon their, their statutory allowances. That was coupled with the fact that we were in the infantile Wakava study area, where we're going through the process of, the state was going through the process of developing rules on how groundwater was treated to affect Wakava's rules on how groundwater was treated to affect the Wakava springs and the spring shut, based upon the nutrient loading. I say this because as this came through, this annexation came through, when we went to amend our comp plan, the department was very concerned about development at the time. So, as we were negotiating our side with the development agreement that you saw, DCA was also involved in that. And they wanted certain protections placed in our comp plan, which they had the authority to make us do, to protect this property, because of what was happening with the Wakava. So, as Cliff said, the comp plan acts as our land use constitution. So they put the framework for what was going to be allowed within this property, within the policy, within our comp plan. The ordinance puts all the details to that, how it develops. The comp plan says what can develop on the property. The ordinance itself says how it develops, has all the specifics of how the development will occur. So, that's how the two work together.
Just, I guess I look confused, because when I was on council a while back, when I asked that question, why the, you know, the Lake Smith doors, I guess we called it the whole thing, you know, the ordinance thing was included in the comp plan, and I was told, that's just a, it was just a reference. It had nothing, it wasn't anything, it was just a reference. They were just using that as a guide, you know, for future developments, not as a strict ordinance.
Well, the, the comp plan is a guide for future development, but it carries the full force of law. And that's what, that's how it's typically explained, is that the comp plan is your blueprint for development, your land development code, and your ordinances are how development actually occurs.
Yeah, I just wanted to make just a quick clarification, because, you know, being, you know, living in the Lake Smith door, there, you know, we were privy to some of the information that we were given as homeowners also on our end. But the, I just want to make it clear that the, the thing just wasn't about, you know, building 54 homes on two, two parcels of land, okay, you know, on the, on the well site and on the other one. It had to do with a realignment. They were actually increasing all of their lots. The remaining lots was about maybe 400 to 500 more lots that were going to be increased in size. So instead, they weren't being decreased, they were going in reverse of what Mr. Pringle went with his development. So they were being reversed at that time, and to get the, the added 54 were coming through, you know, not just at those well sites, it was going throughout the whole development that they were doing, by decreasing other things and making walking trails, and just redoing a whole change of the whole backend of that property. So, just said, just, just want to make it clear, it just wasn't dealing with the, with the two, with those two areas only, and that's, you know, what we're, what we're dealing with. But, I guess what I'm confused with, if we needed a well site, and we needed a fire station to, to see this thing out to 950 homes at the time, why now, why was, why did then the staff say, "It's okay, we don't need them," at that point? And, okay, the, the use of those, of those properties then for development?
Well, crystal balls are a very hard commodity to come by. At the time that those things were offered, 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 offered by Pringle, not demanded by the city, there was no other way to provide for these needs. We didn't have a relationship with the county, where they would provide, or even offer to provide cross-coverage on the fire. We didn't have an alternative water source either. So, at that time, everything that Pringle wanted, and Medallion inherited, was negotiated to give them enhanced benefits, as, as was pointed out in Ms. Sutford's presentation. And essentially, all that we got back were those two sites that they offered to us. As time has progressed, and without the benefit of the crystal ball, the benefit of the passage of time, things have evolved. A, there's been more development in the area. B, we have improved, I guess it would be fair to say, relationships with the county. And the county, even, even when we're going through this process, up until sometime in, roughly 2015, and I'm not sure whether this is solid, but there's a, a stronger sense, as you know, we had some discussions about whether we would have a inter-local governmental agreement, agreement regarding coordination of certain functions, and one of them was fire and water and so forth. We talked to them, and it seems as though either they are willing, or we're on the cusp of being willing to provide us coverage, that will provide some coverage fire-wise for the lakes of Mount Dora, and similarly, we'd have an alternative water source to help increase the, the water pressures in the area. So, we have, in our judgment, meaning collective judgment of, of the city, valuable assets which were pledged, and for which the developer got valuable benefits, that if we get the agreements that we believe we can get, or maybe you already have, I'm not really certain of the status of those negotiations with the county, we then can afford to say, "Okay, then in exchange for what they're worth, we can get your needs met in another way." Those things weren't available to us in 2004, that aren't available today.
Thank you. The historical background is very helpful to me, and I'm assuming to the rest of the citizens that are here. I wonder if it's possible, since it's public, could we have hard copies of those documents just for our files, for easy reference? I'm more visual than auditory, so it's.
I am as well, so absolutely.
Thank you very much. I thought it was well done. Thank you.
Mr. Shepherd, what is that alternate water source that gives us enough water pressure now for the additional homes?
It's down here? I don't even, I do know there, I know that we've had discussions about it, but I'm not sure exactly how it works. But, but there was enough of a comfort level that we could deal with the pressure issue in another way. I just don't know the details. That's a utility question.
I would have to assume that's the, that Brit road that was.
I think you're right. I think that probably is.
It's going out that way, so we can do the whole loop with the repaying water, or salt part, the whole thing. And then, there was a couple of the well sites that were put in out there, also in the same area, out on the Brit road, so.
And I can also tell you, though, that with all of those solutions, there is a price tag that goes along with all of those solutions, that is the city's price tag.
Since you have, hence you have the opportunity to balance some of that price tag out.
As I remember, that was the backup, the backup to the Wakava pipeline going up there was kind of the, the safety factor for the city, and especially lakes of Mount Dora, people like that that really need it.
And the country club.
That's true.
And the country club, yeah.
I still have the thought of why we would have a fire station on private property in a gated community, and from what I have, a Google map, that it's eight tenths of a mile to the first closest public road. And I know this all negotiation with price and everything, but this property that we have in the package from February 4th, 2014, shows this pretty choice property for the location of both of these facilities. And I'm just wondering how that's going into play as far as negotiations for settlement?
Well, as far as negotiations for settlement, it's not going anywhere, because they haven't said to me, "Yes, we want to settle this for, to renegotiate based on where we were and the status of the negotiations prior to." There has been nothing, as far as that goes. But as far as why the fire station inside of a private property and gated community, I can only tell you that it was marketed as a fire station for safety inside of this community, for faster response times. That's how it was marketed. It was marketed, I think specifically, to people that live up north, who have different understanding of how fire safety works, how public safety works. It works differently in northern states than it does in the state of Florida. I can't tell you anything other than what I have received, and heard, and been told related to the history, and I certainly have not had a chance to depose any, anyone from the Pringle development, but I certainly would be, that would be something that I would think about doing.
I, I can provide more. When they offer it inside the development, as again, I said multiple times, they offer, they offer, they offer, and I'm trying to get across the point. We didn't go and tell them, "This is where we want it." They told us where it was going to be offered. And so, if they had offered it outside of the gated development, which did not exist at the time, it was a concept which took approval, and they said, "If you'll approve this over here, we'll get you that over there." That I'm certain is something the staff would have considered. It is less desirable, not more, to have something, as you can probably imagine, and I assume your question is going there, behind a gate. But certainly, our fire service, our emergency responders, our police, the gated communities, literally every single day. So that's not the issue. It is what did the developer offer, and what did the city negotiate? You can fault that maybe you should have negotiated for something else, but that's what was offered.
Well, as far as a part of the PUD, I would think that we would have that fire station more towards public access on 44, where their entry is. And if we had it up there, then it would be accessible to all the citizens. Right now, we have two fire stations for 8,000 homes. So we're going to build one for a potential of 1,000, or we have their own private fire station. That's, that's where I'm all on.
Well, and to chime in with what Cliff said, they didn't offer it to us in that area.
Well, part of the, the city getting involved in the planning of the community.
They designed their community, though.
Let me ask you a question real quick in here. Pringle didn't offer it, but Medallion did, didn't they? Didn't they offer?
This is in the 2004 ordinance.
Okay, but we're saying we're talking about 2004, and it's, but subsequent to that, didn't Medallion offer the, the commercial property to put the fire station?
I'm not privy to that. They have not offered that to me.
The answer to your question, Mr. Jerome, is that they have offered, or had discussions, it's never been become formal, but there were discussions of, "Would you be looking at a site somewhere else and so forth?" So there were discussions. I don't believe, and I don't remember that they ever formalized and said, "Hey, would you swap this for that? Or if we could acquire this instead of that?" I don't remember that those ever became formalized into offers, but to your point, there were discussions of those things, for sure.
Thank you. The first question was answered by Cliff, and it was the developer's request to do it this way. And the second one, as I, as I heard you say that, and respond with your history, that it was, it was marketed as such to the people that bought the homes there, that there would be a fire station there, based upon what they had negotiated with the city. They marketed that to the homeowners that bought there, isn't that correct?
That is my understanding.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna, I bought in 2008, and I'll tell you what, it was, there was no mention of me, of any fire station being, being put in there, or a well station. And I purchased my property in 2008, and when everything was kind of going down at that point, which I was kind of, and I understand why I went back to the jurors and figured out, "Hey, I just made a good deal." But, but it worked out, and it worked out great. But, any, any other questions?
Any question? So, I don't know if there's a venue for it, but if we got to the finish line, and we had the, we, the city had the fire station site and the well site, are, is this something that the residents want us to build a fire station in? And then, secondarily, if there is a fire station there, and I'm just assumptive, I assume that that fire truck would leave there to go to other places that would need service? And just, if we can comment on that assumption, that'd be great.
I honestly, if Sherry knows, I don't know whether the residents have been polled on this. They may well have been, I don't know. I do know that one of the things, and we know this, and I think it's part of the public records, if I'm wrong, tell me. But we do know that Medallion has inspired, I'll use that term, homeowners by saying, "If we get what we want, lot-wise, we can give you some things that you guys want." I think one was, I remember famously, because I still don't know what it is, but a pickleball court, whatever that is, and I think an RV parking lot. I don't know what else, but there were some amenities that were part of the original Pringle plan, that didn't get built because of their suffering through the downturn of 2008, that a number of people, probably prior to even Mr. Jerome, were looking forward to. Then the economy turned down, and now we've got a new developer in who says, "Hey, if I can get a little bit more profit margin by having more lots, then I can afford to provide you some additional amenities." So I know those discussions have been taking place, because we were told that during the whole process of applying for the amendment. I do not know, you know, if they, like I say, whether they've surveyed or taken a poll and said, "Do you want or do you don't want?" And we've heard certainly people say, as Mr. Rolet echoed today, "Why would you have a fire station behind the gated community?" And the answer is, because that's where they offered to give us the property. To the other question about why it wouldn't be on the front of the property, I can only guess, and it's pure speculation, but would you want to go into a community gated or otherwise, where the fire station is the first thing you see, as opposed to somewhere not in the front of the, of the community? I would suspect there was a marketing reason for that too, but don't know. So that's the best I can do with, with the information I have.
And I do not have anything to add with respect to what the citizens are looking for that live in, in the, in the lakes of Mount Dora. I have not been given that information.
I can give it to you. Yeah. We were, we had a general meeting. The, the Lake Smith door had a general membership meeting, and it got voted overwhelmingly the, the site plan that was given to the city at the time by the Medallion home. And we overwhelmingly approved the, the plan to go ahead with the, with all the drawings, eliminating the, the well site and the other one. And so the majority, vast majority of the membership, which are the residents of the community, voted in favor of that plan. The plan to use the, actually, it was increasing lot sizes, other, there was a lot of other little things going on inside the, the plan itself, as far as conservation areas, and as well as building, and there was also even building on the fire station site. So that was all approved by the membership.
I have nothing else. The membership, though, is not a party to this lawsuit anyway.
Right.
No.
I think I would have stopped with that for a while. But, any, any other questions, any other comments, or anything else we need from the attorneys here?
I just want to thank them, on my behalf, for taking the time to do this and educate me, and I'm assuming the rest of the council, as well as the audience here, on the, on the factual issues. Thank you.
My pleasure.
One of the things that we should do, and I don't want to cut anybody off, but I want to make sure there was some discussion at the first meeting about a shade meeting, what they call a shade meeting, or an executive session. And technically, we have to ask for that, as your attorneys. And we will do that, but by asking, which I'm about to do, you're not obligated to say, "Yes, we definitely want one," or "No, we don't." It shifts the opportunity for you to actually tell us, but until we ask, you don't even have that authority. So, I'm now officially asking you for a shade meeting, at which time, we can discuss some other things regarding settlement and strategic expenditures related to, or expenses related to litigation strategy. Those are the two limited areas you can discuss in a shade meeting, and, and that's your opportunity. So, but if you, but you shouldn't feel obligated, just as you weren't obligated to have one-on-ones with us either. If you don't want to do that, then that's fine. If you do, the procedure will be that we will have to pick a date and a time. It will be noticed, just like a regular meeting. We will have to hire a court reporter. The only people in attendance for that meeting can be you folks, the lawyers, and Mr. Pastu, and the court reporter. Nobody else. If we had experts, they couldn't attend. Gwen can't attend. Nobody else can attend. All the things that we say there will be taken down by the court reporter, but that transcript, which will be transcribed, is then held on to during the penance of litigation as a sealed record, and it's not available as a public record until the litigation is completely over. So that's how it works. It's essentially, it's like a delayed broadcasted meeting, if you will.
Okay. And I thank you for that. And this is my own opinion, and, you know, on this, and I feel that you're, you're still waiting on a response back from Medallion Home, on, I guess, the, the settlement thing.
I guess my, I'm not necessarily waiting on a response. They told me that they would get back with me if it was something that they wanted to discuss, that their clients wanted to discuss. They'd have to talk to their client first, and I have taken the silence to mean that their client was not interested in having those discussions.
Okay. Because I just wondered, is it, in lieu of that, and since there's not going to be anything happening, I guess, at this point, is, do we need one, do we need a shade meeting at this point, or wait, or while, until we find out?
That is a, is a call that can only be made by you all. As your lawyers, and of course, they will approach Ms. Sutford before they will approach me, because she is the active defense lawyer here, but if they were to approach her and say, "Hey, we'd like to talk settlement," she would be duty-bound, one way or the other, whether it was an executive session, or meeting with you individually, or conveying the information to Vince, so he can meet with you individually to convey that offer, whatever it was. But the settlements go both ways. So for example, if there was a temperature on this council, we should initiate something, then certainly, this isn't the place to do it, but a shade meeting would be. And while you cannot vote in that meeting at all, you can say, you know, "I'd be interested in the parameters from X to Y, and see if there's, go test the waters, so at least we, we can begin a dialogue." I'm not suggesting we should or shouldn't do that, but those are the reasons the shade meetings exist. I'm not suggesting we should or shouldn't do that, but those are the reasons the shade meetings exist.
I'm going to get a feel from the council, see what's your.
I'm concerned about the difference. I don't have a problem with accepting the recommendation of council for a shade meeting. But I'm concerned about, Pringle, I take it, has completed their discovery.
You're talking Medallion?
Medallion, excuse me. Pringle isn't a party. Medallion has completed their discovery, and we have not completed our discovery, or is that still?
They're not completed.
Back and forth.
I doubt that they're complete.
I don't think so.
It may be. I take it a year before discovery is complete.
Quite possibly.
And in the meantime, the only way to discuss any settlement issue to resolve this outside of litigation would be beginning at a shade meeting?
No.
I'm sorry, Sherry.
We can have individual meetings with each one of you.
Okay.
And how that works, just, I mean, I know there was also confusion on this issue. If, for example, I was to go to Councilman A and they said, you know, I'm kind of in this ballpark. And then without discussing what Councilman A said, we get to Councilman B, and they said, well, I'm in this ballpark. And Councilman C said, or Councilwoman C said, I'm in the, I'm not going to give them anything, and we're going to go to court. Okay? At the end of the day, I can count. So can Sherry. And we can always conclude, okay, it seems like we have at least four council people willing to go this way, so we can at least open a dialogue. Without that, we wouldn't know where to start.
I think I prefer the one-on-one, frankly, for the reasons that it seems to me more open for each individual council member to be able to dialogue their heart.
That is true, because you are very limited on what you can ask us and talk about in an executive session.
And so it gives us more flexibility to cover the waterfront in terms of our questions. It might be more advantageous in terms of developing any settlement discussions based upon the counts that you might have. And it seems to be the safest legally to do that. So I certainly prefer, if that's a direction that council is acceptable, but our legal council is acceptable, I certainly think that's a preferred approach that would take the same, would reach the same goal.
I think they're, you know, which, I don't think they really care which way we go with it. They'll keep a shade meeting, you know, together, if we have to do there. Just, so any comment?
Well, I'm, I appreciate your points, but I think I would prefer to have a joint shade meeting. I want to be able to draw on the thoughts and questions that the rest of the council have in this. Even though it's, it may limit us in the number of questions or the depth with which we can ask questions. I still think that even if we can't do this in the open, in the sunshine, but this is, to me, the next best thing. So I think I would, I would prefer to have a joint council shade meeting.
I would agree with Ms. Tillitt. And at our meeting about a month ago, my thinking was that I could benefit from hearing the opinions and discussion of other city council members. Unless our legal counsel really feels that it would be far and away better to have these individual meetings. I mean, we talked about auditory learners and visual learners and so on. I would learn a lot from hearing what the others were thinking. But, so I guess I would have to agree with Ms. Tillitt, unless you all really think it's better to do the individual meetings.
Well, there are two schools of thought, and it really depends on the type of questions that you have. And once we get in the room and we're having an executive session, if you start to ask something that you can't ask, you will be respectfully shut up quickly by both Cliff and myself. And it certainly wouldn't be, no offense, I hope there would be none taken, but you are free to ask whatever you would like in an open forum. Now, we certainly couldn't give you any indication of what any of the other council members have said. But it really is, is up to you all at this early stage, since we're still receiving information, how you would like to proceed. But you just have to know the ground rules for each way of handling it.
Well, if, with that information, I guess I would prefer the shade meeting with the group, with the understanding that if we get into territory that we shouldn't, that the individual meetings might.
You could follow up with those.
Might be a follow-up.
We would definitely, trust me, it's important that we would definitely shut you down. And the reason for that is, just recently, and I'm sure Sherry knows of the case, the fifth, was it the fifth?
Mm-hmm.
With the fifth DCA, not only found that a shade meeting straight outside the topics that are specifically permitted, but as a result, even though the case was then over, that's why the transcript became a public record, suggested that the members who had participated in it and gone beyond the limits of the shade meeting exception could be prosecuted. We do not want to be there. And so we will do it as nice as we can, but you can bet your, you know what, that we will not allow you to ask us questions that will get us all in trouble.
But having the shade meeting first does not preclude having an individual meeting to answer any further questions.
Or vice versa, if you wanted to have an individual meeting first and then have, I mean, that's, we, you can have access to each other, but you have access to us.
Understand. Thank you.
It seems to me, council members, it would be, I can go either way, so I'm not arguing any important point. I'm just saying, from a waste of time standpoint, might not it be better to do the one-on-one and leave the shade meeting later? I can see, I might have dozens of questions, as you might imagine. And I'm sure I'd get cut off quite a bit, respect, and rightly so, where I was not entitled to go. I'm not sure whether that's productive, because I'm interested, at least, in moving toward resolute, resolving this in a settlement way or any other way that's possible. We have to litigate. We've got the greatest litigators here. I'm fine with that. But. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Rick.
Yes, I probably would prefer the one-on-one because, you know, I have a lot of questions, and I just don't want to be, oh, can I ask this question? So I just want to be open, have the freedom, not wondering if I'm saying the right thing, asking the right questions. And then, kind of like what Mr. Rothson said, later on, have the shade meeting. I just get more out of the one-on-ones, extracting more information. Thank you.
Mr. Say.
Thank you. I guess I'm just Mr. Smith Goes to Washington night. And I just love the idea that these records become public afterward. And I know that I will probably be one asking the dumbest questions and wishing on my other side not to have it recorded forever. But it just seems like good afterlife, if you will, that these things become public. And so that's really all I speak on to that. I think it's just good on itself. And philosophically, I think of us as a board. And I'd just like to have all seven of us hearing the same things, hearing the intonation, understanding it the same way, so that when we make a decision or make our thoughts known, that it's all in the same venue. Having said that, Mr. Rothson makes excellent points, and I can understand the individual meetings also. But I guess I would, I would want to first do the shade group meeting.
Is there any idea when Magaya might be, or what they're waiting for, moving forward?
No indication whatsoever from their attorneys. They have given me nothing in response. What they've given me in response is more discovery requests.
I'm good with either way, doing the one-on-one versus the shade as a group. But I think the timing would be the important part as to when you let us know is the best time, as once you've got your items of discovery and everything like that.
I have information that I do want to share with you now. And it would probably be more solid if I have the additional information that I'm waiting on and may possibly cause me to, me to ask additional questions. But I'm also, at the same time, spending your money now through your insurance company. And if you all want to make some sort of formal settlement offer or you want me to formally engage them in a more formal way as opposed to just feeling them out regarding reviving those old settlement discussions, I can certainly do that. But then that would probably require some exchange on all of our parts, different thought processes, different understandings of the information. That would not be appropriate for an executive session. Now, concrete, we have something to bring to you. This is what I want to propose for settlement. That, to me, is an appropriate executive session topic. I've got something that maybe they have said to me, this is what it would take to settle it. That's an appropriate executive session to me, because then I go in there and I tell you what it is, and I strategize with you. Otherwise, I think you get into uncomfortable areas potentially. So that's my take on the executive session versus the individual sessions.
To move this along, I move that we direct our council to set up individual meetings for this purpose to be followed.
We're not making any decisions tonight.
Well, that's what, if you're going to make a decision, that's an open public. But let me, let me make this suggestion to you.
I'll do it by consensus.
Yeah. Let me explain what I, what I think needs to be said so everybody is on the same page. If you want an individual meeting, we will accommodate you. And if you don't, nobody's going to put a gun to your head. So it really is up to you all what you think you need to help you make good decisions and get good input and to get your questions answered. And whether you do it before or after, that's also up to you. And you can do it as many times as you want to, as long as there's a case pending and you want to talk to us about it. That's something, and if you just want to talk to Ms. Sutphen or just want to talk to me, that's also available to you.
So I think, I think the council is aware, I think of those, there's different options available to them, that they can go ahead of time. But I'm also getting the feeling, because, and I got a read that if we get a group together and we start talking to different things, okay, we plow each other. I know that. We're in those kind of dynamics, and I think they're good to have them. My only issue is, at what point do we, would we want a shade? Is it like a month from now? Is it two months from now? Is it next week? Is it, you know, at what point? And this is where I think we're maybe looking for a little bit of guidance here, because then if you're looking maybe a month down the road, two months down the road, then it gives individual council members an opportunity to call you up and ask some questions individually at that point and to get some information that you're talking about.
And I think that that would be probably an appropriate assessment, that once we have gathered information to where I feel like an executive session is appropriate, then I would let Cliff know so that, and he and I would discuss it. And then he would certainly put it on the agenda and request that we have an executive session.
May I just, maybe a little bit of clarification on that? I know there's a feeling here with everybody, but is there any kind of a timeframe that you can give us as to when you might want to call a shade meeting? Is, again, a month, two months, three months, something like that?
Absolutely. Into the future.
Can you give that tonight?
Well, and the only reason I can't is because there are documents that I'm waiting on. And so I don't know what I'm going to get. I don't know what I'm going to uncover. And I don't know if it's going to cause me to need something else from someone else. But I am, I can tell you that I'm trying to keep it to a minimum because I'd like to propose something to you, because I am hearing that you all would, would like to settle this in a friendly manner, if at all possible. And so that's the direction that I'm heading with this as well. But I want to be able to give you any information that I can uncover. So I think two or three months would be appropriate.
Is the council okay with this? Okay. And I think, I think there's some direction there for.
Yeah, we'll, what will happen is when Ms. Sutphen tells me she's gotten the things that she needs, then I will at the very next meeting, assuming that I'm still here, I will request the meeting again. And then we will talk about then pulling out calendars and figuring out a date that works. But until she says to me, we're ready, then there's no point in trying to schedule it now.
I withdraw my interrupted meeting.
No problem. No problem. Okay, just again, I want to thank everybody for, the attorneys for being here tonight and in your time. And thank council for coming, and thank the audience for being patient, listening, and taking all this in, and appreciate everything. And now, to make, have an entertaining motion for adjournment.